We'll go ahead and call the regular meeting for September twelfth, twenty twenty-three to order. Can we go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance?
I'm sure apparently you might be moving this off.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the sea as symbol of perfect friendship among United cultures.
Although apparently that's not absolute.
Good one.
Oh, man. So number four, we have the approval of the agenda. I was informed of two, two items we need, one needs to move and one needs to strike. We would need to move number eight, it's requested after number seventeen and number eight is the discussion slash action resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two budget adjustments for various funds. Down below discussion slash action approval of fencing at Black Lake Fire Station slash dumpster location. And then the number nine, number nine, we're going to strike the discussion action certification of twenty twenty-three property tax rates. That's going to be a special meeting on Tuesday, the nineteenth. And we're still waiting on some schools to get us there.
What was that last one, number nine?
Yes, sir.
What was it about seventeenth?
Oh, we're gonna move.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is it okay if I ask why we're striking the fencing line item?
No, we're not striking fencing.
Oh, I thought.
We're just moving number eight to after seventeen.
Nine. She doesn't.
And strike number nine.
Oh, that's gotta be especially.
Is there any other adjustments that felic commissioners would like to see?
Mr. Okay. I'm sure. No, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second amendment clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Next is going to be the approval of public input form meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes for August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Is there any adjustments as needed? Seen none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved to say to men clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Number six is the recognition of visitors. First off, I want to thank everyone for coming. Can I go ahead and have, Tim, would you just introduce yourself and I'll introduce the, the list you gave me here?
Good, Martinez, I did.
Mr. Villa. Thank you. Also on Zoom, we have June Rowe, our county attorney, Warden Gina Regina Slade, Dean Williams, Monica Abada, and Aaron Law. I ask if you are speaking today, when you come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone. Moving on, item number seven is public comment. Is there any public comment? Mr. Villa.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners, Tom Be Hill Emergency Management. So I thought it'd be good to give you an update on a few items of note that have happened in the last week or two. First being Stout Canyon Fire was discovered last Tuesday evening. Right now they're reporting a hundred and ten acres on that one. Haven't had crews up over the last couple of days due to the rains, but they've been monitoring. They're calling seventy-five percent containment at this time. Over the weekend, of course, we lost the aircraft due to the LVA fire over in Taos. And then they cut the heavy equipment loose, I believe, on Sunday. So things are looking good, probably going to be a couple of days of cleanup, patrol monitoring, so don't think that's going to be a further issue. The bigger news is the closure of the Rialto Bridge on Highway twenty-one, which the state kind of announced very quickly. I can't give you full details until they actually release the cause, but I mean, if you read between the lines, the fact that they conducted an, an inspection and immediately closed the bridge tells us there's significant issues going on with that bridge, warranting the, the need for closure of that. Have no timelines right now, but again, I mean, we've all gone through bridge replacement projects before. They don't happen quickly. Obviously, number one would be engineering studies on what's to be done, whether to repair that bridge or replace that bridge. Then, of course, the question is, well, what do you do with the old bridge? How do you put in a new bridge? Then the environmental impact studies. All that stuff has to take place, so I'm cautiously optimistic in saying maybe a year, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, a year?
Yeah. We know how long this stuff takes. I mean.
And, and that's a state highway, right? So that's.
So it is considered a critical infrastructure and it'll fall under emergency clauses, which can speed up a lot of those timelines, but I mean, just look at what it took for us to get the Gardner Bridge replaced. And the timelines involved with that was several years. So again, if you speed up all this stuff, there's still the bureaucracy that needs to be gone through in order to replace that bridge. Again, that's just my guess. That's not based on any other information that I have, but just knowing how long these projects to take. And of course, there's been the rumors going about on whether or not that was impacted by the fire or post-fire burn runoff. But actually, I think more likely causes, to give you a short history lesson, in the past hundred and twenty years, we've had three storms which resulted in that hundred-year flood event, but first was the nineteen oh four Mills Canyon disaster. Then nineteen sixty-five, which impacted pretty much everything from Simran to Miami to Springer, left them underwater for three days. And then twenty fifteen, we had the other flood. So that nineteen sixty-five flood resulted in the destruction of the then Rialto Bridge that was on Highway twenty-one. So the state did an emergency procurement and replaced that with a temporary bridge. Wooden construction would detonate. Now here we are some sixty years later with that same temporary bridge. With sixty years of chip seal thrown on top of it. And honestly, I think that's probably the leading cause for this. You know, the other things do add on to that, but I think it's credit to the original project that a, a temporary bridge lasted sixty years as it stands. So that's, that's kind of, I think, the main leading cause for this. It's a sixty-year-old temporary bridge that is long due for replacement and just they came across this sort of incident with the inspection. So credit to them for actually following through and, and not pushing this even further down the road. As far as impacts to the county right now, of course, it's an inconvenience for the vast majority of the county. The major impact are to the residents of Miami, of which probably about two dozen of them work in Philmont or Simran. And so they're having to drive down through Springer. The alternate route is Miami Lane, however, that's not a all-weather road. So certainly through the winter time, that's not going to be an available option. And of course, the joke in my family is anytime you drive the lane, you get a flat tire regardless. So it's not the ideal situation. As far as emergency access, we do have agreements in place with both the landowners to the north and to the south. So if there is need for us to get through there quickly, we can access some low-water crossings. However, I wouldn't even advise those landowners to offer up those low-water crossings for public access. There's the liability issues, there's the additional impact that the state would need to build up those roads in order to qualify them for public access through there. Let alone the fact I don't like the idea of a bunch of vehicles driving through the Rialto River because of downstream impacts particularly to Miami Lake and the domestic water use. So we'll keep apprised of that. Right now, I'm willing to give the state a little bit of time. There, you know, a little bit over into a week of this closure. So they got to figure some stuff out very rapidly. I would say if we don't start hearing in the next month or so, then that's when I would suggest starting to apply some heavy pressure on DOT to get some information out to us, but I'm willing to give them a little bit of leeway, another week or two. So they can get their ducks in their row and figure out what they're going to do. And other than that, yeah, so the LVA fire, by the way, over in Taos, over the weekend, they rescinded the evacuation orders. I think they're calling five hundred and twenty-five acres on that one with fifty-eight percent containment. So that one's looking pretty good. The other side note on that one is the fire did originate in an area where there are a bunch of log decks that were available to public access. And I know there's an investigation going on as to the cause of that fire. Most likely, there wasn't any lightning at that time, so it does point to possible human start. Whether that's just pure negligence, it could be hot exhaust against some grass, chainsaw without a spark rest or cigarette, any number of things could have led to that, but the signs right now on that fire are pointing towards human cost. Whereas Stout Canyon definitely was a lightning caused fire. Oh, and the final bit, the emergency watershed project for Miami reservoir as it relates to Cook's Peak Fire. We do have a contractor for that. They're going to be hitting the ground this week to begin that work. Our deadline right now is October fifteenth. I've requested an additional extension. I think we can get the work done by October fifteenth. However, I want to buy an extra couple of months of buffer time to make sure we have all the paperwork and security. So I sent out that request yesterday to NRCS for an extension on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so is the, the work that's being done for the Miami watershed, is that diversionary work, or are they trying to re do some work on getting vegetation back into the burn scar?
So this project concerns four hundred and fifty-six acres of basically a critical drainage that's feeding the Morris Creek and La Machina Creek, which both feed directly into Miami Lake. That area faced some severe burn. It's mostly pine and juniper in there with a little bit of pine. It's low slope, so it's basically the area where all the water is collecting as it comes down off those ridge lines. So it's complete mastication of all material in there, so mowing down everything, turning it back into a readily accessible organic material, along with reseeding of the area as well.
Reseeding.
With a pretty heavy seed mixture, so that way we can get the light grasses growing up in there. More soil stability and more filtration of anything that comes down and pulls through that area.
Are you concerned that doing it this time of year, that that'll be eroded away by the time next spring comes?
No, and that's the point of the mastication. So you actually apply the seed first and then go through and masticate. And so you're leaving behind much heavier vegetative material to sit on top of that seed bed to provide, provide cover and security for it through the winter time. And honestly, this will be a perfect time of year. We aren't looking at a heavy snowfall this year. Probably moderate, maybe mild snow in the area. So that'll pack down everything and give it time for those seeds to actually germinate. They will germinate through the fall and then sprout up early spring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Colonel.
No questions. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to all of this state that item number eight has been moved to after seventeen. Number nine has been struck from our agenda. We'll move on to item number ten, discussion action of law enforcement recruitment and retention fund, DFA second distribution appropriation number twenty-two dash ZG one zero one six dash nine dash two. This is Apadaka.
Good morning, commissioners. This agreement is for the second disbursement of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four. The original grant agreement was five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, so that was originally dispersed in twenty twenty-three and the just or the reasoning, the use of this grant agreement is for the recruiting and retention of law enforcement deputies. Sound for any questions?
Mr. Colonel.
No questions.
Mr. Ware.
Hi, yes, Mr. Chair. I just have one. Has the usage of this money changed since last year? As, because they were, I was just at a NMC meeting and they were talking about trying to expand the usage of this grant and that didn't happen.
No, and then they, they did put out another, they offered another grant this year that we applied for, but we haven't heard.
Oh, it's a different one.
It's a separate one.
Oh.
That's only for, I believe, the retention.
Yeah, that's the one there. I, I, I thought it was the same grant. I guess it's still.
Two separate ones.
Okay, my bad.
Thank you. I have no questions. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved in second amendment clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Move on to item number eleven, discussion action professional service agreement between Wireless Tower Solutions Corporation and Colfax County.
Good morning. I was directed by County Manager Gore to attend a meeting with him and Dean Williamson, which is on Zoom. In regards to this agreement, what they would provide to us is assistance in helping us get permits for wireless towers. Not us permitting them, but people that come into the county and want to get wireless towers. They would do all of the, all of the legwork for us. They do make sure that everybody meets what standards they need to. They, if this agreement is approved by you all today, they will help write out an ordinance for us, for our county. I did make sure to find out that we do not have an ordinance, so they'll help us make one. Tina Colangelo is going to be the main point of contact to work with them and I will be her backup.
Thank you.
If you have any questions for myself or for Dean.
Commissioner Kern.
Of course.
Commissioner Ware.
Uh, yes, Mr. Trump. My only question is, were these expenses that were going to be part of this agreement, were they budgeted this year?
No.
So we're gonna have to pull that out of cash, or do you have any idea where that is going to come from?
So we won't have to, we won't have any funds that we will have to pay. All of the funds will come from the application fees. So anything that we have to pay will be paid for by the customer applying for the stuff.
I see.
Okay, wireless tower solution will get a certain percentage of that, is that right?
Correct.
Dean, would you like to comment further on that?
Yes, I would. Thank you. And first, Chair and Commissioners, I apologize for not being there in person. I'm in Albuquerque with a doctor's appointment. But yes, the county does not pay for any of our fees. Those come from the applicant when the when the applications come in. We do offer the opportunity for the county to hire us on an hourly basis, so you'll see that in the contract. But that's only if you want us to do something above and beyond what's in the contract. You need us for some other thing and that has to be pre-approved. So all of the fees in our service agreement, say for instance, Horizon comes in and wants to modify a tower. There'll be a set fee, part of it goes to the county, which currently you don't collect. And part of it goes to us. So happy to answer any, any questions you may have on that and we're ready to go with your ordinance. And the resolutions, you should be seeing those soon on your, on your future meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Colonel.
Just one question, I believe, I can't remember, but if, if there was a permitting fee on our fee schedule before.
I don't believe there was, but I could double check.
I, I can't recall, but I know it was discussed, but I, I don't know if it was on there and if that's the case, then all of that will have to be amended.
I will make sure after the meeting if it's on there or not.
Thank you.
Mr. Ware. County manager? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Williams. I don't have any questions either. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Been moved. Do we have a second, man clerk?
Mr. McCurn.
Yes.
Mr. Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item number twelve is discussion action professional service contract pursuant twenty twenty-three dash oh one between Polfax County and Advanced Air LLC.
And this will be the contract that we would like to award from our RFP for the air service. We have, I have worked with June and Barbara Hunt from Advanced Air to get this contract squared away and everyone agrees on the contract. Just know that this contract is contingent on us getting approved by the grant funds. So it does state in the contract that we have to get the grant funds in order to continue with the contract. And Advanced Air is aware of that.
Mr. Colonel. Mr. Ware.
No, I guess my questions are really presented to the grant application of this contract, so I'll save that for a future conversation.
Sounds good. Thank you. I don't have any. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second amendment clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Thank you, Virginia. Moving on to item number thirteen, discussion action amendment to agreement for inmate confinement between Colfax County and the County of San Miguel.
And this is a normal agreement that we have with San Miguel um, for inmate confinement. The reason why we're wanting to amend this contract is to change the price. The price used to be ninety five dollars per day per inmate, but we want to increase it to ninety nine point seventy five. And Regina is online. If you guys have any questions for her.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirk.
No questions.
Mr. Ware. No. Seeing no questions, I don't have any either. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trilla.
Yes. Uh, moving on to item fourteen, discussion action of RFP twenty twenty three dash zero zero three, information technology IT service. Mr. Virginia.
Um, so Amadeo's contract will be ending in November and we are just, I'm just asking to go out to um, bid to see if we can get a either a new contractor or him again.
Mr. Kirk.
No questions.
Mr. Ware.
I I pointed out one thing on this uh, to County Manager that just in the introduction letter to the RFP, it says bank services, not IT services.
Thank you.
Other than that.
Yeah, I saw that.
I have no questions.
I'll get it fixed.
Thank you. Seeing none, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve with the uh, name being changed.
And we probably should approve.
I'll approve the change.
Uh, amended.
Okay.
Yeah.
With the name being changed, the service is being changed from bank services to IT services.
Okay, I'll go type it out real, change it real quick. I have it on my computer and bring it out to Rayetta.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trilla.
Yes. Moving on to item number fifteen, discussion action approval of professional architectural engineering services of Colfax County, event center restroom upgrades. Mr. Provine, thank you for coming up.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Mike Provine with Molsen Bourbon. Uh, here to discuss the uh, event center at the rodeo grounds and uh, we have a task order submitted to the county, however, uh, with discussion with the county manager uh, scope on renovations of the event center is uh, needs to be worked out. So uh, we're not asking for any action on that task order. We're here to more discuss um, action of pursuant to restrooms and then uh, full renovation, possible renovation of the facility itself. Um, we had presented a instruction cost estimate for renovating the existing restrooms. Uh, roughly four hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is sizable amount. That also included some electrical upgrades to the facility itself. Uh, at that time, we were looking at bringing the restrooms to the inside of the building. Uh, but any major renovation of that building would require installation of a sprinkler system or fire protection. So that helped drive that cost estimate uh, to where it was, four hundred fifty thousand dollar level. Um, there are some options on the restroom. Um, obviously, the existing restroom, we don't believe are uh, uh, sufficient and should be replaced. Um, we presented some information to the county manager. Possible, they they do make these uh, and they're, they're, they're pretty nice. Uh, be quite frankly, they're trailers. Uh, restroom facilities that you can bring in, it would be a short term, uh, would be fixed. Uh, you could either hook those up to the uh, existing septic system, although we would need to, county would need to look at the sys- system, existing system, look at capacity. And I know there were some issues with that system recently. But also, uh, if you wanted to keep that uh, trailer facility portable, you could use it at other off-site locations if you wanted to. Uh, you could hire a service to come in and service those restrooms um, for events, specific events, or use them in other locations as well. Uh, costs on those, uh, I think, uh, they, they, of course, they range on capacity, size, uh, amenities, if you will. They are fully ADA accessible. Um, bringing a facility like that in next to the event center um, would give you some flexibility on renovation of the existing facility. Okay, uh, meaning you wouldn't uh, have to attack the fire protection system, the sprinkler system, or some of the electrical upgrades that are, that are needed. However, uh, we would suggest that we need to look at that electrical system and some of the other items in in the facility to make sure that uh, life safety issues are are taken care of, some code issues, so. So I'm here for discussion, any questions you might have or uh, direction from you all to pursue other ideas, if you will, or avenues, options on the facility itself.
Thank you, Mr. Provine.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kirk.
We're to start, so go ahead. Still processing.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Provine, wha- what did you say the cost of those buildings that you bring in were gonna be at?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and uh, Commissioner Ware, I I didn't say because I realized I didn't know what that was. I I I fought, I apologized, my age is catching up to me. I think they, they run like manager, I I.
The trailer, the trailer actually on wheels.
Yeah.
Runs about a hundred and twenty seven thousand.
Yeah.
Right. And this is a kind of a picture of that trailer.
So my understanding is you have a existing, some existing money, uh, budgeted. Um, I'm not sure that's lodgers tax or however it is, but that would fit, be a little more in line with that money that's available. Uh, those, those facilities, I don't know if you've been to events that have those types of facilities, they they are uh, they're not your porta potties. They're they're upscale, if you will. Um, and I think uh, our recommendation is this is, this wouldn't be the permanent um, restroom facility at the event center, but that would depend more on what the county's vision is for that overall facility. That how, how do you want to use that facility in the future? And I think that's really our recommendation is take care of the restrooms if you can. This is an option. Take care of some of your electrical problems. Make sure that safe, safety and public safety and that's your uh, uh, that your use is good. And then really, I think the county needs to uh, kind of vision the use of that facility in the future and 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 move forward it in that uh, method, if you will. Instead of just kind of throwing money at the facility, if you will. Um, we also uh, might add, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, uh, we are prepared to submit a grant, I believe this week, uh, DFA. Uh, the state is offering a recreation center or quality of life uh, grant. Uh, so we're, we're poised to apply for that uh, grant. We actually submitted with the, with the county submitted, uh, I think it was last year, year before, for the same grant. Was not selected for uh, upgrades to the, to the event center. But we think this is a good project to move forward again, let's resubmit. And we think uh, uh, you may have a good shot at that. So that would, that would give you a little more money. We're actually looking at a million dollars to submit on that grant application. Uh, and I think that would give you some real good flexibility for improving the center.
Okay, thank you. You know, my uh, my kind of thought is I, I think about renovating the whole place and putting the sprinkler system and everything else. But my, my other thought is it's good, I I don't believe it's used that much during the winter time. If we put in that sprinkler system, we're gonna have to heat that building all winter. And just so.
Yeah, we usually do anyway.
Do we?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought we winterized the.
Well, we would winterize bathrooms, but the building itself was previously was kept like at sixty degrees or that. And then this last one, winter, they had all of the pickle wall and stuff going on there, so.
Oh, that's right.
Assuming it was, I'm pretty sure.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so um, but I I appreciate and, you know, totally agree with you where you're coming from with it.
Yeah.
Your comment.
Did you have any more comment on?
No, in, in um, I think it would be a good temporary fix for sure, and I can see where this may be used in other areas. Let's say we, we had a big fire or something and we had uh, you know, at the convention center or someplace or the facility we're talking about possibly building up in the valley, to have something like this available for that or for our neighboring counties, I think could be a huge benefit, so.
And the, and one of the benefits I see to this trailer is it is portable, yes, but also we don't have to go in and mess with the septic right now, because if we're having current issues with that septic, this would just uh, probably be used as kind of a porta potty that could be pumped out and cleaned and whatnot.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, uh, yes, uh, while these types of facilities can be hooked up to a normal sewer service, you all have a septic tank out there of some sort. I don't think there's any real records on the capacity of that system, leach field, the condition of it. I know it had overflow um, recently. Or there was some issue with it. Uh, so I, I tend to agree is a, is that uh, well, it's a cost, recurring cost, you can tailor that to fit the need or the use a little bit, uh. And then uh, I think with the overall look at the event center, the existing sewer uh, septic system, that type of thing needs to be looked at. Then maybe there's opportunity to hook it up if the city's system is close by. Um, and and get that off the septic tank if you can, but.
Thank you, Mr. Ware.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Provine, I guess my question is, is there any specialty knowledge or certification that you have to have in order to operate a facility like this? I mean, does it require anything from the state as far as, since we are, you know, using wastewater, I didn't know.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ware, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, um, obviously, um, any connection to the local utilities, you'll have to get their approval of the city, they hook up fee, that type of thing. But as far as certifications or licensing, things like that, for actually operating an event center, I'm not, I'm not sure of that. Uh, that would have to be looked at. Um, there is a kitchen area, if you will, inside the facility now, I believe that plumbing, there is plumbing, water hooked up, there's some sinks and uh, items like that, so. Um, I'm kind of backing up a little bit as far as the question about heating over the winter. I think you would still need to protect that or shut that system down. But as far as back to your, your question about certifications and permits and things like that, uh, any uh, special use, I think, um, I'm not sure the jurisdiction of that. Uh, but any major upgrades to that facility, you would have to go through the state construction industries division for permitting. Uh, uh, also fire marshal approval on certain things. So there's that whole gamut of things out there, not operating, but just upgrading, if you will, that will require some permitting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yeah, my question is more about the unit that we're.
Oh, I got you.
As far as that, operating that, because, I mean, I don't know exactly how you dump that thing, but I would imagine it's got tanks in it, right? Like a motorhome or something. And I just don't know, since it's a public use, if you have to have uh, special certifications for that. I'd, I think that'd be a good question to answer. But my other th- uh, concern about the building itself is um, if you do have issues that that septic system is really old, which I imagine it is, and that leach field. Um, once you go to do, uh, you know, the rules have changed dramatically, you know, better than anybody over the last decade as far as septic systems go. My guess is that system will have to be totally replaced if we go and we do any major construction on that building. Um, and I, 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 the only reason I believe that to be true is because when I was working with the people at Angel Nest Apartments, uh, their septic system was put in in nineteen eighty six. It was put in for five buildings. They only have two buildings, but because the, the regulations have changed so much, they're gonna have to totally, if they add one more building, they'll have to totally replace, even though it's underutilized, it's just that it doesn't meet current code. And it's grandfathered in up until you do some sort of major construction and then the state's gonna come in and make you replace the whole thing. So that might be a significant part of the cost. I don't know if that was taken into account when you gave this bid or on the.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Ware, um, because we were pretty ignorant about what the existing system is, we left that. Uh, we didn't really appropriate a cost for that. You are entirely a hundred percent correct that you could be faced with replacing the whole septic tank, leach field, however, that uh, the existing uh, system. Uh, that's a big cost. There's permitting involved in that uh, with the state. Uh, we understand and we haven't done the research on this and that should probably be one of the next steps moving forward is, is there a city sanitary sewer service available uh, nearby? Uh, I'm seeing a head shake, no. Uh, how far is it? There are other systems that maybe a little pressure sewer system, little grinder pump type setup that might be appropriate here that I think would be a better, could be a better solution than a septic tank. Uh, certainly in the permitting world and uh, where you don't have a huge um, flow from the facility. It's uh, periodic, if you will. Uh, and these little grinder pump stations, we use them successfully around. There's one at the Angel Fire Airport. Um, using it to hook up to the village's sanitary sewer system, that may be appropriate. So there's different options there, I think, that can be looked at. Um, needs to be looked at a little bit more detail before we really recommend the county move forward with any uh, itemized uh, renovations of the building. Now, the existing restrooms, I think they function. Are they uh, legal as far as code, things like that? I'm not sure about that. Um, but there's an ADA accessibility that we need to look at, things like that. Any major renovation of that building or or upgrades to that building, you're gonna trigger several permitting issues and code issues, um, we believe. One is the Mexico Energy Code. It's a metal, pre-energized metal building. It is insulated. But um, any major uh, upgrade or renovation of the building may trigger that. X, that could be a big deal. That could be a big cost. Um, the fire protection, uh, what, what you use that building for, that may trigger the sprinkler system, whether new restrooms or not, um, that there may be some triggers there. So there are some um, I wouldn't call them hidden costs, but there are some things that we haven't been able to really evaluate because we need to find out what your revision is for that building. What, what you look at for the future of that building. And one option maybe to tear down the building, build a new one. I don't, I don't know. I'm just throwing that out because once you start bringing in these items and you start having to uh, address code issues, bring it up to certain codes, things like that, then your cost may be.
But if we look at building a new building, it's well over a million.
It's much more than a million, yes.
Yeah.
So.
So.
I'm not saying that's the, that's uh, that's a, that's the avenue. It just buyer beware, if you will.
I think this, in my opinion, the best choice would be to possibly purchase one of these trailers and then make the up needed uh, fix the safety issues as far as electrical and anything else like that goes. I mean, that puts us within the money that we have within the lodger's tax right now to expend. We probably won't be pulling out a general fund and removal of the old bathrooms and I guess maybe a door right there to go out to the, the trailer. Be my, I guess what I would like to see, and my only question is, if we were to use lodger's tax funds, can those restrooms be moved elsewhere to, I'd assume so with fire and everything else, because it's benefiting the whole county. But I'm not sure. That'd be something we'd have to look into.
Stop the.
I think.
Would say, sir, um.
That's a question.
You know, that, yeah, it's probably a legal question, but
Yeah.
as long as it was in the unincorporated areas, I wouldn't see that it would be a problem, if it was to be moved in any incorporated, it's mine.
Mr. Chairman, my experience with uh, using lodger's tax, which, you know, I'm don't, I think we need to, really need an opinion on June, but my experience is that it has to be a um, facility, it has to be used on a facility that's used for tourism. And so I don't, you know, I, I, again, I don't know for certain that it couldn't be used for other things, but that would be my concern with lodger's tax and and again, I, I don't think that should slow us down. I think, um.
I agree.
I think we have plenty of cash to be able to cover something this, it's not in the budget, so, um.
Are you okay with having Mike move forward with the pricing? We're pricing one of these trailers out, the removing of the old bathrooms and bringing up the safety issues at, like the electrical and stuff like that.
Yeah, I, I think we need to look at all aspects of that before we make a final decision, but, and I know you said it'd be over a million dollars for a new. But, and I know you said it'd be over a million dollars for a new building, which I assume is correct. Um, but this is half a million dollars, just to fix the one we have.
Well, that's if we, I feel if we go with the route of the trailer and the upgrades, we're probably more looking around two, two fifty instead of the actual half a million for the.
Oh, I see. I didn't, I didn't understand that.
Because if we do the, if we do, if we go off of that, we've still gotta add the new septic, which throw in another sixty at least, I'm thinking.
Oh, for a commercial, well, that size is probably more than sixty, but.
Low end, yeah.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, um, so let me repeat back what I think I heard. Uh, so we'll, uh, we'll cancel this task order proposal, we'll revise it or submit another one that, that, uh, uh, provides assistance in, uh, specing out a portable restroom facility, uh, trailer mounted, if you will, um, coordinate with the county on, on what the needs are there. And as far as portability and, uh, accessibility and connection to the building, we'll need to, uh, do some code evaluations on that. But we also will need to look a little more at the electrical system, see what kind of upgrades are necessary there. Uh, so we'll, we'll love task order proposal for the, for you to submit that through the county manager.
Thank you. Commissioner Currie, would you concur?
I, I would agree with that, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have one last question. Um, on, is this trailer gonna have basically the same number of stalls as we currently have, or is it gonna be?
Looks like it has three male stalls and female stalls and then one handicap accessible stall.
I don't know how many we have.
It's like two.
Is it just two?
Yeah. And God forbid, you have to go number two. So I don't think there's.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, I think the, probably the right way to look at that is, uh, we would get with the county and assess the use of the building and kind of come up with an occupancy and that'll drive the, the capacity of the restaurants for the, yeah. Uh, we, uh, we understand you don't need thirty stalls and, uh, men's and women's separately and all that, but, uh, we need to size it appropriately, I think.
For, for the time being.
But I think what we're trying to do is present, uh, typical call, if you will, um, without there. But, yeah, don't, don't, don't take the number of stalls there as, that's what we're recommending. We'll come up with that recommendation.
Thank you. So I, I don't believe no vote is needed at this time, right? The roles, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
So we'll just table it to a future date once we hear back from Moles and Corbin. Yes, of course.
So before I started working here, I was a septic inspector for Colfax County and Union County, so I have some answers for your questions. Um, number one, yes, you do have to get a permit. If you're gonna get a building like that for a toilet, you either need to get a permit for a vault toilet or a permit for an outhouse, or you have to upgrade the system that's already there in order to work for that system. I don't think it'll be sixty thousand dollars for a commercial system. When I left, I would say around twenty to thirty thousand, but prices have gone up. So it, I don't know that it's gone at that excessive, but you do definitely have to get a permit. Um, as far as connecting to the city, you're not that far from the city, but you would have to get some sort of pumping system in order to pump up to the city and the city won't help with that because it's gonna not be on their cost. But if you were to make lines and pop up to their system, you could definitely do that. A lot of the homes, um, like by the hospital in that area, they either have to get septic systems or pump up to the city.
And, and Mr. Chairman, we just did an analysis of taking the Village of Angel Fire's septic system out to the Angel Nest Apartments, which is, um, one point oh six miles, uh, line and two pumps. It was gonna take two pumps and it was just over a million dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, do you have a second?
No further questions.
So Madam Clerk, do we need to, uh, make a vote on this to table it?
No action.
No action? Okay. Thank you very much. Um, moving on to item number sixteen is discussion of the NCNMEDD Colfax County Workforce Housing Proposal. I believe we have Monica Abada on the line.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me on the agenda today and I appreciate you letting me attend virtually. Um, I submitted a, uh, a short proposal to Commissioner Weir, um, I believe a couple of weeks ago regarding some things that, uh, we've been discussing, uh, Commissioner Weir and I, particularly through the, the North Central Board of Directors. And as you know, Commissioner Trujillo, um, we did do a housing, uh, kind of study for Colfax County last year, which I believe you might have been involved in some of those meetings where we looked at the potential to do acquisition rehab and resale of homes for workforce housing. Um, I did, I don't know if you all received it, but I did include the final report on that to my, in my proposal with Commissioner Weir. Um, so what we're, what we're actually looking at doing is possibly, um, having North Central take the role of, of purchasing homes that are vacant right now, rehabbing them and then reselling them to members of the workforce in Colfax County based on the study. And, uh, we would be proposing to apply for a grant through the MFA, which is called the Restoring Our Communities Grant. It's specifically geared toward acquisition rehab, uh, types of projects. It, they did release the NOFO for that on September first. We had actually been waiting since kind of the beginning of the year for that to come out. Um, so we are prepared to apply for that application. The issue is that, um, the, the way the grant pays you, it pays you in arrears. So like, uh, let's say we rehabbed a home, we wouldn't get, uh, any money coming into North Central until that home was rehabbed and resold. And then North Central would be paid a small fee for that work. So in order to really get the program going, we need to hire a contractor or a staff person to move this forward. And so we, I had had some commit, some conversations with Commissioner Weir about possibly using, um, any funding that the county might have left over from ARPA or state or local, uh, state or fiscal recovery funds um, to see if we could get this project going, to hire a staff person or a contractor to do this work. Once the program starts going, I feel it will sustain itself. We will be earning a little bit of a fee on each one of these homes and we can keep paying the contractor going forward. But initially, we do need some startup funds for this. So thought we could have a discussion and see if you are interested in this partnership. I have to disclose that I haven't shared this proposal with my board of directors yet. Um, so I'm, I'm kind of seeing if there's interest from the county on moving forward. And then we would have a discussion at the North Central Board level as well.
Thank you very much, uh, Commissioner Weir.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think this would be an important program. As you know, one of the major issues in really the country, but certainly the state of New Mexico and, and northern New Mexico is the lack of workforce housing. And in our community, thanks to the study that was done, uh, by North Central, it's very evident uh, that there are many, uh, I don't remember the exact number, but it's in the hundreds of houses in Colfax County that are currently unoccupied. And I think, um, this grant, along with the efforts of North Central and hopefully the support of Colfax County would, um, be a great pilot for the state to have a, a system where we go in, we find unoccupied homes. We upgrade them to current day standards, make sure they're safe and everything, and then resell those homes, uh, and hopefully do so where, you know, we're not trying to make a huge profit that a private industry might be making. Um, I've been working on housing here for almost four years. This is the best public slash private, uh, solution that I've seen out there for workforce housing. There's a lot of programs for people that aren't working. There are really very few programs for people that are working. And when I say people that are working, I'm talking about teachers. I'm talking about employees, municipal employees, county employees uh, that are, you know, making a medium wage in the county and, um, are trying to find a place to live. Uh, just so y'all know, we've lost many teachers in the Semeron School District because they've come here and couldn't find a place to settle down and live permanently. I think if you brought the superintendents in, you'll find that's true in Semeron as well. And I'm not sure about the Raton District. Uh, but, uh, the Springer District is in, I'm not sure about Maxwell, but I know it's, it's a prevalent issue. Uh, government workers, I mean, most of the municipalities right now are heavily understaffed. We had those challenges and one of the biggest issues is especially, um, in towns like Angel Fire, Eagle Nest and, and Semeron and Springer is there's nowhere for these people to live. When, you know, you have a dual income and they're each making fifteen to sixteen dollars an hour, there's either no place for them to live or they can't afford to live in what is available. And, uh, you know, this is something that I think is, uh, very important for Colfax County to work to solve. I don't think we'll have any growth in our county until we solve this problem. And as you're aware, the county's been in decline for the last two, well, really, since nineteen nineties when they closed down the coal mine. But even after that, when, um, the last several decades, the county has been declining in population and there's nowhere for anybody to live, but we have literally hundreds, a couple of hundred houses. I think the report showed that are unoccupied. And so I do think this is a big part of the solution. And I hope that the, uh, my fellow commissioners and county manager will support more central economic development and trying to actually find a solution to the housing problem here in Colfax County.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Commissioner Currie.
I guess my question is, is where the manager feels that we would find the hundred thousand to, uh, of the seed money?
Do you, county manager or Ms. Opadoc, do you know how much funds we have left over in ARPA? From, uh, from the sheriff's tower to the scanning of documents?
Not certain. Um, I don't know what the full total is after we deduct all of those, um, expenditures. Um, the only thing that I can say is that we do still have the LATCF, which is, um, you're able to use that similar, for the similar purposes as, um, the ARPA money.
And that was what, two fifty or two, two something, right?
Uh, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So we actually have our, uh, two thousand twenty-three disbursement. And now we just, I just submitted for our twenty twenty-four disbursement and none of it has been used.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything more, Commissioner Currie? I do want to say that the, uh, I was, I was involved with this, uh, with Mrs. Abada and her, the consulting firm that was used. Uh, the, actually, some of the, the data in there came from me, from houses that I've done here personally. Um, so I do see the need, the need for this and, and recently I just went and looked at another investment and in my district and I saw it and, and I, it reinvigorated me for the need for workforce housing. Um, the, the property I went into is worse off than our roads building. So it was, it was pretty, pretty rough and people were living there. So I, I really, I really do want to push this. So they, they are looking for, what, a hundred thousand to start is what they're, they're estimating. Um, and then, uh, my question would, you think Raton would be willing to split this with us if it's gonna be taken here? Or, but I'm fine with also just moving forward. I do see this as an issue, but there's just a thought to my fellow commissioners. And then my, my problem is, there's the issue here locally is with this money. Money is not the issue. It's, to me, it's the price and the return on investment. So is, are we gonna be able to get houses that are, are within the budget range and be able to fix them up and then sell them for a reasonable, reasonable price that a worker can afford? Uh, so that was, that's one, one question that I had. And it's more so speculating right now with flipping of a property. Is there an option, though, if we cannot sell it, that we could turn it into a, a rental? And then what I've, I've seen, I have a house currently on the market for sale and the prequel, it's over two hundred thousand. And I'm not getting many buyers and it's barely over two hundred. But a lot of the prequalifications in the area, they're maxed out at two hundred thousand. So to me, affordable housing in our area needs to be maybe below two hundred, maybe a hundred to two hundred thousand max. So, uh, those are just kind of some thoughts and, and some questions. Uh, Mrs. Abada or Commissioners?
Commissioner, I can, I can respond to some of that if you'd like. Is that okay?
Please.
Um, I'm, I'm just getting to know this, uh, Restoring Our Communities program. Uh, and like I said, the NOFO just got released, so there's actually some questions I want to, um, ask MFA to make sure I'm understanding correctly. It does appear to me like if you're using these funds, that they do allow for the potential that some of these homes, you may not be making a profit on when you actually purchase them, rehab them and resell them. That it's possible that you're taking a loss. Um, there are some parameters that they have in place that you can't take too big of a loss. But I think they allow for a little bit of that because we know that every unit is gonna be different, right? Some units are going to need less work, some units are gonna need more, prices are gonna, you know, vary house to house. So, um, that's, you know, that seems to be built into the program. There are income limits for this program. They are pretty generous because they go up to, I think, a hundred and fifty percent area meeting it, median income. I would have to send you a table to show you what that looks like for Colfax County. Um, so this wouldn't be, um, we couldn't actually price these homes that high. They, they would have to be pretty reasonable, um, because there are some income limits for the program. Um, also, oh, I had another thought. This, this is, uh, basically geared to work with, um, MFA's homeownership programs. So we would have like a, a, um, a financing source ready for them that doesn't include down payment assistance and some of the other, um, costs, uh, built into the MFA loan. I'm not sure it requires every single loan to be an MFA loan, but it does, um, want, if we're using their funds, want us to try and use their programs to the extent possible. And I think that's probably a good thing in terms of getting people qualified. Um, in terms of the rental, uh, North Central, I think, and again, I, I kind of need to bring my board a little bit along on this because this is gonna be a whole new, um, area of activity for North Central. We've never done this before. And in fact, until a few months ago, we weren't even allowed to own property. We had to get our joint powers agreement changed. So that's one of the reasons we haven't really been able to broach this topic before. Uh, so now that we are able to own property, I think that we would be comfortable owning it and, and reselling it. I don't think we have the capacity to be, uh, property managers. But if there was a local, um, organization in the community that was interested in purchasing the property and then, um, you know, and then renting the property, that would be fine. I just think that, you know, our capacity would be limited in terms of renting and property management. You know, we'd much rather sell the property outright. So I hope that, I hope that addresses some of the questions that you raised. We do think that Colfax County is the best place to start this program because even though I know there is still a mismatch between prices and income, the mismatch in Colfax County is a lot smaller than, let's say, in Taos. Like purchasing a home in Taos, fixing it up and reselling it would be extremely difficult to do. Um, as you all know, places like Taos, Red River, Los Alamos, Santa Fe, um, Colfax County, there's actually, you know, the, the economics of this is gonna be a little bit better. I think once we get the program going and we see how much program income we can generate and program income's kind of a government word for revenue, uh, we might be able to do some things that are a little bit more out of the box, um, like support in, um, home buyers that maybe are slightly over the income limit that MFA has. Uh, but that would have to be, you know, once we generate a profit and we're using unrestricted funds. Like if we're, we're taking a grant now for this, we'd have to stay within the parameters of the grant program.
Thank you very much. I did answer a lot of my questions. Uh, Madam Treasure, you, do you mind coming up to the speaker?
Good morning, everybody. I, I caught some of this downstairs listening, um, on the computer. Um, are these properties, are taxes paid up on them or do they belong to the state?
They belong to private individuals, most likely.
To the state?
No private individuals.
Oh, so they are, okay.
Yeah.
That was just my question because. That was just my question because if they belong to the state, then it has to be. Uh, if they've gone to the state already, even though they're owned by private individuals and they turned over delinquent taxes in three years. They are the state's property.
That if, if any property would be purchased, that would be cleared up through closing. So, and, and title search and everything, so.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. You know, that's, you know, that's a good point too. If, if there is a tax sale coming up, maybe we can talk to the state and see if we could get uh, preferred. Or maybe North Central could bid on it. But at any rate, um.
I, I was going to add that this is why we think it's really important to, you know, hire somebody local. We know those kind of issues that we're bringing up now, like working with families that maybe aren't sure they want to get, let go of their property. It's vacant, but it's going to take some time to work with the family. Identifying tax, you know, so things that are, that are going to auction. Like this is going to take a lot of on the ground work. And so we want to make sure we have, you know, someone in place who, who's hopefully in Colfax County, who knows the community, who know, you know, who can reach out to property owners and have that really good relationship. And so that's what we're hoping for. Um, so just, just wanted to say that.
Thank you. And with this, now with, with what you, what you're saying with the income levels and, and everything else, else and going through MFA, that really brings me hope for workforce housing within that price range of they're able to afford a house. So, and then that you're not necessarily having to make a profit. You know, you are rehabbing the property that's not useful to the community and bringing it up to a livable standard. And you know, the, the person will take pride in ownership in their property and, and uh, keep it up moving forward. Uh, I would support using the, the a hundred thousand from the, I forget the acronym, uh, what's the acronym? L A T C F. Uh, and that's, that'd be contingent on the uh, you know, your board approving and also uh, accepting of the grant. If, if the, the grant is funded. So I don't know of my other commissioners, Commissioner Kern.
Um, one question, I guess, um, this individual is hired or they become an employee of the county or they or of uh, North Central, Monica?
Commissioner Kern, they would become an employee or a contractor with North Central. They would be our responsibility.
So a contractor.
And I definitely feel that there's a need like um, Commissioner Weir said, you know, I mean, we lost a math teacher there in Maxwell because she couldn't find housing and Maxwell Schools right now is in the process of adding two teacherages to try to, you know, alleviate that problem going forward. But um, you know, I, I, I just think we need to be careful that we're not giving the perception that we're competing with private uh, uh, individuals that are, you know, make a living from flipping houses, basically. Um, you know, so I, I think we just need to be cognizant of that and respectful of it. And not trying to undersell the market, but um, as you said that, you know, there's a limit on how, how much you can discount them, so. But um, we just need to be careful, but I, I would support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kern. Commissioner Weir, did you have anything more? I'll, I'll get to Ms. Apadoc.
Thank you, Commissioner, um, Commissioners. I guess my only recommendation would just be to verify with a county attorney that we are, that we would be able to use those funds for the L A T C F prior to just, just for, just for clarification and verification that those funds are available to use in that manner.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Uh, if I may, Commissioner?
Yes.
Uh, this is June, uh, sir, and then the chairman and the commissioners, I believe that there, you know, what we heard, I think I'm going to check with Ms. Apadoc about the, the A T C F fund issue. And then I think I'd prefer to look at the, the federal rules on the treasury rules. And it seems to me that affordable housing can be uh, part of the category you can utilize. So I think that's something that we can think of later. But uh, I think the, the only I'm, the only thing I'm kind of concerned, uh, I think your chairman, you already identified before. Just make sure, make sure that, you know, we are not just donating hundred thousand dollars for, uh, you know, nothing in return. So make sure that, you know, we can quantify uh, performance and make sure that what kind of staff they need to provide it to the county. What kind of achievement goal in step one, step two type of thing, making sure that we can have some quantifiable performance uh, criteria to be evaluated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, county attorney. Commissioner Weir, did you have any more? Do you like to make a motion?
Um, so uh, I would like to make a motion that the commission uh, vote to approve uh, the expenditure of a hundred thousand dollars to be expended to North Central Economic Development. For the use in the uh, grant uh, application uh, for the uh, for the rebuilding of unoccupied homes. Uh, given that the North Central does receive that grant.
Yep.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Adam Clerk?
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Weir.
Yes.
Chairman Trillo.
Yes. Thank you all very much. This is very exciting. Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Mrs. Beta, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I'm happy to work with you on, you know, putting together a, like we said, like a performance-based contract for this. You know, that outlines the specific metrics. Also, I, I would assume the county commission would want some input into prioritization of workforce employees. So like, for example, I think it'd be perfectly reasonable if you wanted to prioritize your own employees. Municipal employees or, you know, different classes of employees in terms, because this is, it's going to be a little bit of a slow process. You know, we'll be doing one or two houses at a time. And so, you know, I, I think if you want to do some prioritization of the workforce needs, that's, that's, I think that's in line with, with your commitment to the program. So happy to, to work on that as well.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to this project. I think it's going to be a great thing for Colfax County and ultimately the whole region.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on, we will go to item number seventeen, discussion, action, approval of fencing at the Black Lake Fire Station Dumpster Location. County Manager Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So has the commission's been aware, uh, this has been kind of an issue for, uh, for quite some time. Um, but some of the recent, the recent improvements that we've done at that uh, location is we did install cameras. And we have been uh, working uh, pretty diligent to try to make sure that that area is kept clean and squared away. Um, we do have a proposal uh, to put in a fence and you should have a copy of that for twelve thousand six hundred sixteen sixty-four. The type of fence it will be um, will be a metal pole. And the reason we're looking at that is that the metal poles can be pounded apparently into the ground. At a lot faster rate uh, than uh, going in and, and digging uh, a hole and putting concrete in. And I think right now, since we're in the fall of the year, um, with your approval, I'd like to, to move forward on this. The uh, um, I think the steel construction along with the uh, um, standard wire construction, kind of similar to what we already have is exactly what we need for that location and it would cover three sides. Um, to start, if we needed to look at a gating system or something like that, we could uh, certainly do that. One thing I want to make the commission aware of is this is not our property. Um, and you should have a uh, a deed uh, with some of the restrictions on there attached in your packet. Um, I did talk uh, to Mr. Honey on the phone. Um, and uh, advised him he could even zoom in if he wanted to, uh, to this meeting. But in my telephonic conversation with Mr. Honey, the owner of this property. He essentially advised me, he does not want the property back and that he feels a fence around the property would uh, enhance um, containing uh, trash for blowing, uh, blowing around. Um, and that he thinks it's a good idea. So he would recommend as well that we uh, go ahead and put this fence in. So I would recommend that uh, um, with uh, with that knowledge, that the commission, uh, I think twelve thousand six, six hundred sixteen dollars is a pretty reasonable amount uh, to uh, invest in that area in order to try to manage solid waste. Uh, some of the challenges that we had in that area for years. And uh, I would make the recommendation that we move forward.
Commissioner Kern.
Um, you're right in saying this is, this probably been an issue since the trash has been there. So um, I would like to see it in writing from the property owner that this is acceptable. Um, and I also think the commission needs to be aware that once we do this, we're probably going to have to look at fencing Miami Lane. Um, probably Maxwell. And uh, any of the other, other sites because um, even though Black Lake may be the worst, doesn't mean that we are not facing issues um, uh, in the other locations as well.
Commissioner Weir.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I just want to clarify, the county is the property owner. The, the, the property has been deeded to the county. The issue is there's a revision clause in the deed and the revision clause states that if the property stops being used for fire service, that the property owner has the right to clawback that property. So we are the owners of the property. Um, it doesn't say that it can't be used for other things. And I've had many conversations with Mr. Honey. He's actually a good friend of mine and I've known him for years. Um, but um, he has expressed to me verbally that um, because we're getting ready to move the fire station, which really started my conversation with Mr. Honey. And back when uh, previously, I guess this was three years ago. The idea was we're going to move the fire station across the street to Lager's Ridge. We already have that lot donated by, by Stan Samuels. And um, we were going to turn that property into, keep it as a, as a trash transfer or whatever. Trash drop off and give that building to the Roads Department to house uh, equipment that right now I guess is not being housed properly or always being housed properly. And um, I had had that conversation with Mr. Honey and he was agreeable to do that. He uh, as the manager said, he told me he does not want the property back. He donated that property. So the community could use it. Uh, and uh, so I, 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 I don't think, I mean, if you want to get something in writing from Mr. Honey, I don't think that'll be a problem. But uh, again, I just want to clarify, we actually own the property. It's just that there's a revision clause in there. And the revision clause doesn't really have anything to do with fencing or, or trash or any of that. It just says that it must be used for fire, uh, for a fire station. Uh, the other thing, I just want to make sure that, and I don't know, I know uh, Commissioner Kern's been out there. I'm at uh, Commissioner Tree, I don't know if you've been out there, but I don't, I want to make sure that the fence is not placed on the property line. Because that one to the, I guess it's to the south there. Um, the property line is actually down the hill. They had to build that property up uh, to put the fire station in uh, decades ago. And so it needs to be along the fence on the south side, needs to be along where the the, the raised area is not on the property line itself. Because the property line is below the raised area and trash is still going to blow uh, to that. And um, so this is going to be a, an eight-foot fence. And then what kind of uh, mesh it are there or wire fencing are they going to use? It says
Very similar to the wire that we have on the fence that's right in back of the dumpsters.
Okay, that'll work. That'll be good. Um, anyhow, those are my only questions.
Thank you very much. And I, I, I support this fence even with just doing it. You know, even if it's just temporary for the, for the couple of years or whatever till the new fire station is built. Um, so I'm, I'm fine with moving forward with that. The Madam Clerk just brought something to our attention with the, the property deed. And this is something that the county attorney and the county manager could probably talk with Mr. Honey and see if we could get this possibly revised or, or discussed is uh, that with your stipulations of the fire station, that if it's not used, the shell automatically revert to the grantors and their heirs. Um, and the part was probably removing the, their heirs. Because I mean, sure, maybe Mr. Honey agrees now, his kids may agree, but his grandchildren and stuff may not. But that's just a
So what, what I would do, Mr. Chairman, is uh, I would ask Mr. Honey to reboot, remove that clause altogether. Again, this was over a year ago, but he verbally told me that he would be willing to do that. Um, but I don't know, you know, that was before we had this solid waste issue. So I don't know. Uh, I haven't asked him that again to re, asked him to reaffirm that. But when we first started wanting to put a fence up here, um, again, over two years ago, I had that conversation with him. And um, and he told me verbally that he'd be willing to remove that clause.
Okay, well, that works. Um, I'll make a motion to approve this uh, with the exception that it be, we have a written statement from Mr. Honey that this is allowed and then he'd be willing to change the, this part. Would that sound okay?
I, 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 uh, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation would be that we, uh, if we're going to get something for Mr. Honey, that it be to approve the fence going in, because that's our current condition.
Right.
And then separately, we work with legal counsel and Mr. Honey to get that clause removed.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Because it's going to take a long, a lot of paperwork and stuff to reissue that deed and, and change that, don't you think?
All you gotta do is just correct it. They just have to go in and, and correct that deed. It could be a corrected.
So it won't take that long. It's not like.
No, uh, the Chairman Trillo and Commissioners, so I think I can, I'm happy to draft that, uh, amended special warranty deed and removing that diversity clause. And then uh, if the, the owner sign it, we can record it with the clerk's office.
Okay. Okay, I just thought it took a long time to process all that paperwork. Commissioner Kern, did you have anything more?
No, I just, um, like I said, I, I think we're going to end up having to look at doing other areas as well.
And I support that too.
And Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Kern, I agree. I've been asking for a fence around Miami Lane for as long as I had Black Lake. For, you know, tra, Miami Lane is specifically for trash issues. And um, you know, this one was trash combined with uh, the move, moving of the fire station. But uh, yeah, Miami Lane does need, I'm not sure about the Maxwell side. I haven't been there, so I don't, I can't speak to that. But Miami Lane also needs a fence around it.
This would, just the cost of the fence would be a savings and, and county time wasted on, on trash blowing just in itself. So I, I mean, that's one thing that I would. And then it, it would only go further if we put fencing elsewhere, like you, like, 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 hello, Commissioner stated. So.
So do you want to just approve the fencing then? And then because we have a motion, but we don't have a second.
I'll second his motion.
Okay.
And that's to, just to approve the fencing or approve?
Well, I think your motion was to change the
And to change that, to approve the fencing and
pending the change of the
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Chairman Trillo.
Yes. Thank you all very much. So moving on to item number eight now, it's going to be the discussion, action, resolution of twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two. I'll mention it, that's that's various funds.
Um, resolution twenty twenty-three thirty-two is to increase expenditures within the solid waste fund. Capital outlay building structure, twelve thousand seven hundred dollars for the building of the fence we just approved.
Commissioner Kern, any questions? Commissioner Weir, saying none. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So.
Second. It's been moved in second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Weir?
Yes. Yes. Uh, item number eighteen, discussion, action, New Mexico memorandum of understanding between the Office of Treasury. Sorry, Office of the Secretary of the State of the state in Colfax County.
Chairman, Chairman Trillo, Commissioners, um, ladies and gentlemen, this MOU is so for twenty-five thousand dollars. And that helps uh, offset the election expenses that we have. And we will, I'll submit a report of everything that I charge out for the election to the SOS.
Thank you, uh, Madam. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Kern?
No questions.
Commissioner Weir?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, my only question is, do you have a ballpark on what Uh, uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Madam Clerk, my only question is, do you have a ballpark on what the total cost would be?
This is kind of the ballpark of the twenty-five thousand because uh they did approve to get uh for the election workers. To get an increase this year, so I will increase their um salaries accordingly.
So the state should cover ninety-nine percent?
I know what you're doing, yep. But we still need to have some money, cause there's some things, yeah, they should cover. It should be pretty close to a hundred percent.
My point was just to make the point that the state covers most of the cost of the election.
Except the stress and the hair dye it does.
Except for the stress, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a clause where we can apply for more should it go over.
Right.
The state doesn't cover your uh psychiatrist bills.
No, no.
Like a lot of people running for office, so.
Yeah, we had sixty-two, we had two write-ins come in um last week, so we have a total of sixty-two people and a few questions on the balance.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some of.
Second. Been moved inside amendment clerk.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner where?
Yes.
Chairman Trillo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nineteen is the Commissioner Dockets. Uh, Commissioner Kern?
Um, nothing really to report, just getting the same complaints from road roads and trash. Trees. Um, but I do have one question. Um. We haven't approved expenditures since the June sixth meeting and I'm wondering why.
Uh, County Manager?
Um, essentially, um, because of some of the uh um continued conflicts. We did uh work with legal counsel that said essentially uh we uh don't need to approve those uh expenditures. Uh, because the commission has already uh approved the budget. June, would you like to expand on that?
Well, I believe that the uh uh Chairman and Commissioners, I believe that there those expenditure issue, I checked with the. Uh, General Counsel's Office of the County Association and then other counties, uh what they are doing as to the expenditure issue. And I believe that the, you know, as long as the, you know, the Corvus County Commission approved the budget. I believe that the expenditure issue is something is uh should be something that uh has been dealt with. Uh, uh, in in the management level, so it does require to be approved uh from the uh County Commission. And I also checked with the uh Walker Boyd of the uh General Counsel of the Ethics Commission. So I believe that the, you know, uh, as long as we have the conflict of interest policy and then uh we have some expenditure issue. Uh, uh, associated with that, so I believe that those things has been considered. Uh, and then we provided uh uh the expenditure associated with those matter uh. Uh, cannot be uh should not be approved uh by the commission on a on a monthly basis. But however, commission has authority to uh review and then uh look at that, that those expenditures in the. Uh, I think allow in the commissioner's website, making sure that the commission can review them. And then if they have any question, they can raise those issue as long as uh, you know, uh, there's no conflict on that matter. So I believe that those are the kind of a system, uh, uh, you know, guidance from the uh. Other uh county attorneys and also uh ethics commission at this time, and then I'm happy to provide more information to you. Uh, Miss Kern, uh, Commissioner Kern about tho- those issues later, but I think I believe that the. Uh, I checked with the three other counties and I do not think they uh approved expenditures on a monthly basis. And then they look at that the budget and then they look at the expenditures, but those information should be available to the. Uh, Commissioners and then the Commissioner got any question, they had to raise that issue and then, you know, the county manager or. Uh, any other, uh, you know, the financial specialist uh must be able to uh explain those expenditures. I, that was my understanding.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I. Who established this policy and June, who's responsible for establishing policy for the county? So first, who who established this policy?
You guys said policy and budget.
I'm sorry?
The Commissioners.
Commissioners, yeah.
And budget. Commissioned and this was never brought before the commission.
Doesn't was not brought before.
And and who's, June, who's responsible for establishing policy and county government?
I believe that the it should be Commissioner.
Yeah, so I don't see how you can make a change, especially a change that. Uh, has not even been disclosed to the committee. I don't see how you can make a policy change without bringing it to the commission.
Mr. Chair. I I would agree. I agree with Commissioner Weir. I, we've never even discussed this, just all of a sudden we quit approving them. And the problem I have is the lack of transparency. I mean, we always had it in the minutes of. All the expenditures in that for the public's benefit, not the commission's benefits, for the public's benefit. It's their money we're spending. And now nobody sees what the hell we're doing.
I think that uh that we need to go back to approving uh until the commission approves a policy change.
I agree. Uh, County Manager?
Oh, I believe uh all that information has been downloaded uh into the portal um as well, so that information has been. Uh, available to the commission. It just hasn't been put on the agenda.
No, I I I disagree. I don't think it's been been made available to the commission and um. I, I think we need to go back to the last time we approved them and approve them going forward and obviously we know. What conflicts we're talking about and that needs to be voted on separate by the other Commissioners. I don't have a problem abstaining from that vote, but as far as approving everything else that this commission. That this county is spending, I think we need, it needs, there needs to be some transparency.
June, do you have anything to add?
Well, I think at this time, uh, you know, I think number one priority should be making sure that all the expenditure should be. Available for the commission's review, and then I think we need to make sure that that has been done and then. Uh, I think, uh, you know, that we uh will have a separate discussion about the how to provide, uh, you know, uh, itemized, you know, the budget. Uh, uh, you know, expenditure approval, but I believe, still believe that the, you know, those uh expenditure issue. Uh, on a monthly basis can be done, uh, as long as the it it is within the budget approval. However, I believe that the those uh. Expenditure uh issue should be uh transparent to the public and making sure that the commissioner can review all those expenditures.
Um, did you have something? Again, uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I I think that until the commission approves a policy change. The policy read, it needs to remain the same regardless of whether you're legally obligated for us to vote. The commission uh has uh been voting on the expenditures. And um, I think that needs to stay until the commission votes to change the policy.
Well, thank you. Um, County Manager, can we see that the, all the expenses from June sixth? Moving forward are put on the portal for our review and split out accordingly. For uh approval of expenditures at our next meeting?
Will do.
Commissioner Kern, do you feel that it's appropriate?
Absolutely, I feel it's appropriate.
And then we'll continue moving forward.
Month by month, not just in arrears, but we need to see them going forward, like Commissioner Weir said, unless the policy is changed. We need to see them and the public needs to see them.
I agree. Yes, Madam Clerk?
So, just so that I get it straight for when we're gonna do the minutes, we are going to do like, for example, Joe, you guys approved. Perder uh July, July expenditures. Um.
Each month.
August, September, that way I can go in and get caught up with each individual, each individual month.
Yes.
Okay. Just for clarification, now, we're gonna do the minutes.
And and Mr. Chairman, I would like to request the manager's office to provide the. Report, I I don't know the name of the report, but uh the, I believe is back in May. Then Ms. Apadaca provided me with a port that uh brought the spreadsheet that we normally get online. Uh, it was, you know, you know, that summary report, that was very helpful. In trying to figure out what money was spent where, so if we could uh include that report. In the um, uh, in the packet, I I think that'd be very helpful to try and figure out because. The spreadsheets themselves, you don't get to see the, because of the security on the spreadsheet, you can't see the. Um, account numbers because they're condensed, because they have that compression, that numerical compression on the field. And you can't change that yourselves, even if you download it. Yeah, the security on those Excel spreadsheets won't allow us to make any changes to the formatting. Uh, so that report was extremely beneficial to me anyhow in making sure I understood what money was being spent where.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Miss Virginia. Can you please come to the microphone?
Just so you guys are aware, I have still been loading loading them in the portal for you every month, so you guys can still go look at them. They're not the Excel sheet, it's just my printable version and I've just been scanning it in there, so there's a copy in there for everyone and I do that around the tenth of every month. But I will go back to splitting them up.
Thank you.
I I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I see that. I just went and looked uh when this came up. But the commission wasn't notified that they were in there either, so. Um, you know, and unless we just arbitrarily went in there to look. Uh, we we didn't, I didn't know that they were being uploaded anyhow, because usually it was on the agenda that. We were to approve those and they were uploaded about approximately the same time the Thursday before. And I tried to look at those things over the weekend before the meeting, so I don't, I just didn't, wasn't randomly going into this. Uh, folder that you have set up without notification, so, because we weren't notified. That a change had been made in the process.
Thank you. Commissioner Kern, anymore on your Commissioner Docket?
None at this time, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner where?
Yeah, I I I just want to reiterate to the commission that um. Uh, my, it's my recommendation that we. Uh, take actions to remove Tri-State as our solid waste vendor and pursue other vendors. Um, it's been a continued, especially since the new owners uh acquired the company, it's been a continued. Uh, debacle. Uh, even though today it might be picked up or one day it might be picked up, it only takes a day or two days later. Before it's a problem again, we we went an extended amount of time without the trash being picked up last week. I think after they signed the letter, they failed to follow through on the letter that the manager had them sign. There's plenty of grounds uh based on the contract for us to dismiss them. And I think it's time that we take action on that. Uh, I don't want to put this off anymore. They've had multiple. Chances over six months worth of chances and we just, you know, it's it's only a matter of time before. Something bad goes wrong again. I will tell you that. Throughout this disaster, that I think we we've had a uh what I'll refer to as a shining star emerge. At Colfax County, I have people call me and use vile language. Uh, at me in regards to the solid waste situation, multiple people. Everybody loves Julie Martinez. And I think that um she has gone above and beyond the call of duty. Uh, and not that I've seen it, this is just feedback I'm getting. People will call me and they'll say it's not Julie's fault, Julie's doing everything she can. Everybody wants to protect her. So uh I did want to give kudos where kudos are due. As I stated before, I do not see this as an issue with the staff at the county. This is an issue with Tri-State. And I think it's time for us to find a new vendor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner where? Um, I too have had uh trash issues. Um, I'm very frustrated with Tri-State. I believe we do need to make a a plan moving forward uh that involves maybe some of Tri-State or not. Uh, I'll leave that up to our solid waste department and our county manager for the time being and then report back to us. Um, I have asked that the county manager hold payment for uh Tri-State till where they are. Uh, meeting the needs of the contract per se and any expenses as far as. That the county has incurred as far as roll-offs, et cetera, um, will be removed. And I will, I'd ask that we not mail their check, that they need to come and and uh pick up their check here at us, we could actually. Have a discussion or put a face to uh instead of just a phone call or a name. Um, with that. So I, during my last time since our last meeting, I've sat with the uh treasurer, we had a meeting with the New Mexico State Treasurer. On financing funds or investing in state funds and it it seems to be a really good deal for the treasurer. And for Colfax County, we'll have access to this funds within twenty-four hours. I know it was something that we voted on last meeting, uh, but just uh we got a better education on it. So that was, that was good. Um, we also, I asked the county manager and Mr. Provine to help set up a meeting with State Aviation. Uh, we went down and met with them, it was a very good, uh, they gave me a good education on the Angel Fire Airport. Um, how we're moving forward. I learned a lot about the FAA matching on the land on the. You know, payment in lieu of, you know, our land up there, so that was, that was very educational. Um. And they were very receptive and and brought up a good point and I think they're gonna help us out with the uh fuel containment area. So they they mentioned that, so I know Mr. Provine's gonna work on that for us, but. They mentioned that'd help us with the funding for the fuel containment since they understand how hard it is to get contractors up to Angel Fire. And we are again be doing the foundation for the hangar, so they they mentioned they could assist. Since the contractor's already there doing the foundation for the hangar, we could get the fuel containment done as well. Uh, so that was, that was very good. Uh, we. And something I'd I'd ask the county manager to look into with Mike Provine and and also June is. I know we we've been ha- we've been having this position open for an airport manager for a long time. And I know how expensive it is to to actually live up in Angel Fire uh. And get affordable housing, so in our tour of the Raton Airport, they had. Uh, a trailer that the the airport manager lived in there. And I wanted to see if it was legal and even if it's possible that the county could purchase a modular home. And make that part of a compensation for an airport manager. It benefit having somebody. On location like it does the Raton Airport uh and just see if it is legal, possible, and then bring it in front of the commission for for discussion. Um, also, Raton sent their current land lease agreement for new hangars. Uh, or for hangars being built by private individuals. That's something I asked that the county manager work with the Commissioner Weir. And the airport advisory maybe to review and see if that's something that they'd want to move forward with. I believe. My thought with the Angel Fire Airport is to stem the losses that we incur up there and make it more profitable where an FBO would go in there. And the way I see that going down the road, this is gonna take investment from the county and it's gonna be over multiple years. But it's to increase fuel sales, have hangars available and have fixed aircraft stationed out of the Angel Fire Airport. Uh, another thing I was talking with State Aviation, they cannot help with snowplowed equipment. Uh, that was one of the conversations that we had with them, but they said the FAA can. Uh, I reached out to Senator Luhon's office and they're gonna, they offered to have a quick meeting with us this next week. On, they they'd just like to know more about the Angel Fire Airport, the flights that come in. Our past experience with FAA and they're, they feel like they're gonna be willing to help us with get some snow removal equipment up there. And that is pretty much all I have for my docket, yes.
May I respond to a couple?
Yeah, of course.
So, um, I don't know the exact date, I could go back and find it, but um, we do have a land lease agreement currently. So there was actually a land lease agreement previous to me being uh Commissioner. And then about a year ago, maybe a little over, we redid the land lease agreement to include. Hangar lease slash land lease, I have it up on my computer right now, hangar slash hangar ground lease agreement.
Would you mind sending that to me? I'd just like to look at it.
Okay, sure. Yeah, so this is something the commission approves. Okay, sure. Yeah, so this is something the commission approved some time ago. It's um. Uh, so I I just thought, I mean. If that needs to be improved, you know, but um, it 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 is out there and. Uh, the committee put a significant amount of time into rewriting that. Um, and it got approved before the commission, like I said, over a year ago. The other thing about the airport director, um, I did some research on the airport director and. You can go to a website called government salaries dot com. And then look up airport uh, directors. These are directors that work for different government agencies, so some. Airports are privately owned and wouldn't be included in this. But the part of the issue is the airport director salary. Uh, the average is between seventy-two and a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. In Americas. And I think we're playing paying ours forty, if I remember correctly, about forty-five, forty-five. That's gonna be part of the problem. Um, and although I'm I'm not opposed to the housing idea, I'd like to see the details of that. Um, I think. If we really want to grow that, we're gonna have to be willing to invest some money. Now, the issue is right now that uh, the airport. Directly loses money every year. We know that it loses between thirty and a hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, so obviously, any increase that we have would contribute to that loss. But I think if we can get this commercial airline. Um, onboard and some of these other projects, I think we definitely can turn that around. And um, you know, the one thing I will say is that the airline that we did. Uh, uh, just approved the contract with. They actually are an FBO on several airports in uh, in the country. And so. I don't know, you know, we would have to go out for it and go through the proper process. But uh, I would hope that once we get them flying commercially into the airport. We could go out for a uh, RFP for an FBO again and hopefully they would respond to that. And they, like I said, they have experience in several airports of operating that FBO and I think that'd be very. Beneficial to us financially. And uh, once we get the hangars and. You know, we're gonna start renting more hangars and then if we could just push this land lease, we've had several people ask and I've had. At least three constituents tell me that they're ready to build. Uh, one of them being this gentleman that unfortunately got his car stolen a few weeks ago. Uh, we we just need to get to them the land lease agreement we already have. It it's a, it's a pretty well-written one and it, the problem with the old land lease agreement was. After twenty years, the property basically went back to the county. So nobody's gonna spend a half a million dollars or two hundred thousand on a building. That potentially was gonna go back to the county. This new one allows them to basically extend that indefinitely. Uh, so I think it's more appealing, it's more in line with you see with other land lease agreements at airports. Uh, across the country and I think if we could start working with those people and getting them this. Land lease agreement, I think we could probably get started right away on having people come and develop properties there at the airport.
Thank you. Um, also, they did, we did ask about the commercial air flight agreement and it it does look promising for us, you know, they're still evaluating everything and it's. My understanding, they just came back to the county with some questions and data. Um, but it was really exciting to hear that they. There is another grant available, so if we get this commercial air grant, there's another grant that we could apply for that will provide, you know, uh. New furniture.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Facilities.
Facilities, so that was exciting to hear. So, thank you. Um, I did have two other things just for for my area there for my constituents. I did. The Blosser Gap Bridge and the paving projects. Um, the surveying is being has been completed on the paving. Uh, and that's also, both projects are gonna expect to be started in the spring of twenty twenty-four, so. And then I shared the the drawings I brought from Moles and Corbin with Commissioner Kern over here. Commissioner Ware, if you'd like to take a look at it, you're welcome to. Sure, that's all I have. Uh, moving on to the county manager's docket.
Thank you, very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, on some of the issues on the airport, we did um, also. Um. Work with the county attorney to uh, kind of um. Improve that land use agreement and as a matter of fact, we just sent that off to Jeff Gilmer uh, for discussion on the fourteenth, so we're working on that. Um, I think that right now there's a lot of opportunities uh, available and things are beginning to fall into place at the airport. With the grants that we're getting and uh, once again, as Chairman Trahill said, um. It was a very good discussion in Albuquerque with New Mexico uh, Department of Transportation Aviation Division. Um, as far as um. Uh, salaries, um, when I first became a county manager for that airport position. And I think once again, we have to uh, look at comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. But the county did um, hire a individual to do a salary survey. Um, before that individual, um. The individual took longer than uh, than he should have, so the county terminated that contract. But in my discussion with him, uh, the amount that was offered to the airport manager was uh, right within those recommendations. Um, moving on, I did follow up. The commission had advised me to um. Move forward with a discussion on a land swap with Eagle Nest. And um. I took uh, Glenn with me and uh, just so you know, Glenn is just now beginning to finish up. On a lot of the uh, um, issues in this end of the county due to um, pretty extensive flooding. And uh, just so you know, Commissioner, we're up in Angel Fire area, we are starting to uh. Work on replacing some of the cattle guards and culverts in that area as well. Glenn is also gonna get me a date, um, when he can start working on putting tailings at the airport. Parking lot and kind of finishing that off, so things are moving forward there. But I'm getting back to uh, Eagle Nest, um. What we uh. What was actually, we were considering as a kind of a um, land transfer. Um, really isn't that. Uh, the county has a uh, a wooden structure on about an acre of land in the city. Or in the village of Eagle Nest. And I think the city was wanting to trade that for some land outside the city. There's really not that much land where the land is located is actually at their transfer station. And they anticipate um, as sometime in the future. Actually, uh, maybe moving their uh, lagoons, sewer lagoons and stuff like that into the area that. What that uh, they were offering up as a part of that uh, transfer. So I think right now we're uh, probably looking more at a lease. Um. When I actually seen that this was at the transfer station. I engaged in a pretty lengthy conversation with uh, Mayor Jeff Carr. And some of the discussion was they have a transfer station that's fenced in. That has person, that has a person that works on it. Um, they separate uh, and do recycling there. They don't allow any kind of um. Hazardous materials in there and this is way outside of town. So I talked to him about actually moving some of the dumpsters from the current location of Black Lake. And putting him in that location. Once again, I think it would solve a lot of the uh, uh, some of the challenges that we have at the Black Lake location. Um, some of the uh, pros would be would uh, get it away uh, from a residential area. Um, golf course and a beautiful part of uh, Colfax County and get it onto the backside of Eagle Nest. Some of the challenges that we're looking at is it would be a drive to that location. But um, currently, even though we put up cameras um, at Black Lake, um. Late night operations, we're still getting a lot of abuse um, at that location with people. Um, dumping uh, items that they shouldn't be dumping like tires, old furniture. Um, appliances. Um. However, I think this might be something that um, maybe uh, Commissioner Ware. Could uh, kind of get some feedback from maybe some of the residents up there to see if uh, they'd be willing to make the drive in order to remove. Um, basically, right now I think we have twelve dumpsters in that location that are constantly being abused. So um, I think if we had some uh, discussion uh, with some of the folks. Um, up there and kind of see if that would be something that they would be interested in, I think that uh. Uh, you know, we could look at the feedback and uh, uh, continue to uh, make decisions going forward on that. Um, I did talk to one individual in a subdivision that was on the HOA board and when I. Uh, discussed this issue, she said she was gonna take it to her board. But um, she said if we could get rid of that, um, then in her opinion, it was probably. Um, worth uh, transporting it down to Eagle Nest. Once again, if we did this, I think it would uh, actually help Eagle Nest. Um, we could come up with some kind of agreement. But I think it could be a win for the county and a win for Eagle Nest. Um, and a win for the residents. But once again, I think we have to have more discussions, see if residents would be willing to do that. So that's a kind of food for thought. Um, once again, as Mike brought out, uh, we did apply. This will be the second time we applied for a million dollar grant. Um, for the um, event center. Um, part of that grant would include room and facility. Um, plan, design of a restroom, janitor closet, kitchen. Uh, added to current building layout, it would also in- uh, include uh, materials about seventy-three thousand. Electric for about a hundred and forty-three thousand and rental equipment of about fifty-two thousand. Um, so we're, we're pursuing that, that'd be the second time we pursued it. But it does meet all the criteria, uh, our event center for that grant. Um. Moving on to Tri-State, uh. That has been a a challenge uh, for the county and I agree with the commission. I think that the uh, county has uh, done everything humanly possible to try to keep up with some of the uh, challenges of Tri-State. Um. As the commission and residents of the county addressed directly to Tri-Ti- uh, Tri-State. On August the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, the current services provided by Tri-State, Tri-State did not meet the threshold requirement. Of the contractual, uh, the contract executed on November the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Despite this event on August the twenty-eighth, and I think that's the date Commissioner Ware was referring to. The parties agreed, and this was in writing, to rectify this unacceptable trash services. And to make specific agreements to remedy the issues. However, after the parties agreed to the August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three memorandum. It appears that the county experienced another unacceptable um, trash services uh, when we had. Uh, those basically caused by two more trucks breaking down. The contract, uh, when we reviewed it in paragraph two subsection C states. That if the services are not acceptable, the county can provide a letter of exception for those invoices Tri-State will submit. Therefore, the county will provide a letter of exception um. Of the invoice uh, that Tri-State submitted for the amount uh, which uh, which will be withheld. So I will continue to work with the county attorney on that. And as far as um, looking at other services, we can certainly do that as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I do have one quick question for Commissioner Kern. When Commissioner Kern, do you know when in your time, did there was, was there ever a trash analysis done or contractor come in and kind of review and give us a plan on?
Ability study done um, prior to me being here, I think it was done possibly in fifteen. Which it's gonna be very outdated now, but uh, there were several copies of it in the, in the manager's office there. And on what it would take for the county to take over services. Um, just to remind you, if 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 we're looking at. Ceasing this contract, we need to be very careful about who we're talking to, if we're gonna go out to bid and that because. You don't want procurement violations um, with prior discussions being had with other people, so um. But the the service has been unacceptable.
Yeah, I would just like to review that, the feasibility study to kind of see. What it recommended towards us and kind of seeing how it's applying to what we have today and maybe give us a path to move forward. Or at least in my my thoughts.
Wait, there should be copies in the office.
Thank you. You county manager, would you see if you could find that feasibility study?
For sure.
And send it along, so. Thank you, um. Seeing nothing else, uh, we will now. We'll take a recess and we'll be touring a building, uh.
Come back in at like eleven fifteen so I can have you guys. So recess till eleven.
Yeah, we'll recess till eleven fifteen. So, thank you. Yeah, roll recess till eleven fifteen. So, thank you. And unfortunately, no.